Stathard.
Here.
Thompson.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gernat.
Here.
Gray.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Please stand for our pledge allegiance and remain standing for our invocation by Council Vice President, Mr. Gernat.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Lord, indolce with thy spirit that we may be fair and just to all as we begin our earthly work. Amen.
City Clerk certifies publication daily record on May 3rd, notice for a pre-council and regular city council meeting, May 7th, 2013. A current copy of the Meetings Act is posted in white binder on the east of all the legislative chambers.
Good afternoon and welcome to the Omaha City Council. This meeting is conducted in public and by law may only address the topics listed on the public agenda, published agenda. The council will hear testimony but will not engage in debate of issues with the public at this meeting. During testimony, it is not appropriate to convey, it is not appropriate to applaud or convey disapproval. These actions only detract from the formal decorum of the meeting. At this time, please turn off or mute any electronic device. Mr. Clerk.
Zoning ordinance on final rating and planning board attachments will take items five, six, and seven as one case. Five is ordinance to rezone property located east of 99th Street and south of Reddick Avenue from LI to R7 medium density multifamily residential district. A planning board and planning department recommend approval. Eight is ordinance to approve a planned unit development overlay district. A planning board and planning department recommend approval.
Yes.
Gray.
And seven is ordinance to approve a development agreement providing for public improvements
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
for which the developer is responsible.
Mr. President.
Yes. Public hearing on agenda items numbers five, six, and seven begin now.
Passed seven to zero. Resolution to re-plant, plat subdivision agreements and special use permits will take nine, 10, 11, and 12 as one case. Nine is resolution plan and plat entitled Pfeffers Edition Replat One located at 13412 North 47th Street is hereby approved.
Are there any proponents?
A planning board and planning department recommend approval. 10 is the replat transmitted here with the title Pfeffers Edition Replat One is hereby approved.
Excuse me.
A planning board and planning department recommend approval.
Public hearing, well, we're going to continue the public hearing.
11 is subdivision agreement is hereby approved. 12 is a special use permit to allow development in North Hills Environmental Overlay District is hereby approved.
Correct, Buster.
A planning board and planning department recommend approval.
Yeah, I think.
Public hearing on agenda items number nine, 10, 11, and 12 begin now. Are there any proponents? Are there any proponents?
Yeah.
Are there any opponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Second.
Roll call.
No, yeah.
Stathard.
Yes.
Public hearing is closed.
Thompson.
Yes.
Yeah.
Festerson.
Roll call.
Yes.
Gernat. Stathard.
Yes.
Yes.
Gray. Thompson.
Yes.
Yes.
Jerem. Festerson.
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. President. Gernat.
Yes.
Yes.
It's passed seven to zero. Gray. Item number eight, ordinance vacating the north-south alley east of 18th Street from Ames Avenue
Yes.
south to the east-west alley behind 4425 North 16th Street. Jerem. A planning board and planning department recommend approval.
Yes.
Public hearing on agenda item number eight begins now.
Mr. President.
Are there any? Yes.
Hope it was held. It's passed seven to zero.
Excuse me. All right. Public hearing was held on April 30th, 2013.
Item number eight, ordinance vacating the north-south alley east of 18th Street from
Motion to approve, second.
Roll call.
Stathard.
Yes.
Ames Avenue south to the east-west alley behind 4425 North 16th Street. Thompson.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gernat.
Yes.
Gray. A planning board and planning department recommend approval.
Yes.
Jerem.
Public hearing on agenda item number eight begins now.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes. Are there any?
Passed seven to zero. Hope it was held. Resolution to re-plant, plat subdivision agreements and special use permits will take
Excuse me.
nine, 10, 11, and 12 as one case.
Public hearing was held on April 30th, 2013.
Nine is resolution plan and plat entitled Pfeffers Edition Replat One located at 13412 North 47th Street is hereby approved.
Motion to approve, second.
A planning board and planning department recommend approval. 10 is the replat transmitted here with the title Pfeffers Edition Replat One is hereby approved.
Roll call.
A planning board and planning department recommend approval. Stathard. 11 is subdivision agreement is hereby approved.
Yes.
12 is a special use permit to allow development in North Hills Environmental Overlay District Thompson. is hereby approved.
Yes.
A planning board and planning department recommend approval. Festerson.
Public hearing on agenda items number nine, 10, 11, and 12 begin now.
Yes.
Are there any proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Second.
Roll call.
Stathard.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gernat.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
It's adopted seven to zero.
Good luck.
All right, thank you.
Item 14 and 15 go together. 14 is Regency Lodge, 909 South 107th Avenue, Class C liquor license, new application, old location. And 15 is a catering license for the same applicant at the same location.
Public hearing on agenda items numbers 14 and 15 begin now. Are there any proponents? Please state your name and address.
Barry Hoffmister, 5611 Michel Ave, La Vista.
Thank you, sir. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Second.
Roll call.
Stathard.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gernat.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
It's adopted seven to zero.
Good luck.
All right, thank you.
Item 14 and 15 go together. 14 is Regency Lodge, 909 South 107th Avenue, Class C liquor license, new application, old location. And 15 is a catering license for the same applicant at the same location.
Public hearing on agenda items numbers 14 and 15 begin now. Are there any proponents? Please state your name and address.
Dan Morick, 23903 West 70th, Shawnee, Kansas.
Thank you, sir. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Second.
Roll call.
Stathard.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gernat.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
It's adopted seven to zero. Item number 16 and 17 go together. 16 is Texas Roadhouse at 520 North 155th Plaza, Class C liquor license, new application, old location. It's an annexation. And 17 is a catering license for the same applicant, same location.
Public hearing on agenda items numbers 16 and 17 begin now. Are there any proponents?
Thank you. Christopher Heinrich of the law firm Harding &amp; Schultz, 121 South 13th Street, Suite 800, Lincoln, Nebraska.
Thank you, sir. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Second.
Roll call.
Stathard.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gernat.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Passed seven to zero. Resolution to re-plant, plat subdivision agreements and special use permits will take nine, 10, 11, and 12 as one case. 9 is resolution plan and plat entitled Pfeffers Edition Replat One located at 13412 North 47th Street is hereby approved. A planning board and planning department recommend approval. 10 is the replat transmitted here with the title Pfeffers Edition Replat One is hereby approved. A planning board and planning department recommend approval. 11 is subdivision agreement is hereby approved. 12 is a special use permit to allow development in North Hills Environmental Overlay District is hereby approved. A planning board and planning department recommend approval.
Public hearing on agenda items number 9, 10, 11, and 12 begin now. Are there any proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Second.
Roll call.
Stathard.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gernat.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
It's adopted seven to zero.
Good luck.
All right, thank you.
Item 14 and 15 go together. 14 is Regency Lodge, 909 South 107th Avenue, Class C liquor license, new application, old location. And 15 is a catering license for the same applicant at the same location.
Public hearing on agenda items numbers 14 and 15 begin now. Are there any proponents? Please state your name and address.
Dan Morick, 23903 West 70th, Shawnee, Kansas.
Thank you, sir. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Second.
Roll call.
Stathard.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gernat.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
It's adopted seven to zero. Item number 16 and 17 go together. 16 is Texas Roadhouse at 520 North 155th Plaza, Class C liquor license, new application, old location. It's an annexation. And 17 is a catering license for the same applicant, same location.
Public hearing on agenda items numbers 16 and 17 begin now. Are there any proponents?
Thank you. Christopher Heinrich of the law firm Harding &amp; Schultz, 121 South 13th Street, Suite 800, Lincoln, Nebraska.
Thank you, sir. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Second.
Roll call.
Stathard.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gernat.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
It's adopted seven to zero. Item number 18 is Nebraska at the Market, 1215 Lovemore Street, Class C liquor license, new application, old location. This is an upgrade.
Public hearing on agenda item number 18 begins now. Are there any proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Second.
Roll call.
Stathard.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gernat.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
It's adopted seven to zero.
Good luck.
All right, thank you.
Item 14 and 15 go together. 14 is Regency Lodge, 909 South 107th Avenue, Class C liquor license, new application, old location. And 15 is a catering license for the same applicant at the same location.
Public hearing on agenda items numbers 14 and 15 begin now. Are there any proponents? Please state your name and address.
Dan Morick, 23903 West 70th, Shawnee, Kansas.
Thank you, sir. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Mr. Gernat.
This is the old hardware store at 1801 Vinson Street, isn't it?
Yes, sir, it is. We've imagined a new sort of creative purpose for this space.
Okay. And the interior is going to consist of what?
Of a sort of a gallery slash performance space of several offices of a staging area for food and beverage.
And this is when you have performances and shows and displays, is that correct?
Certainly. We are, we're by no means a traditional bar operation. We're seeking a license specifically to augment the patron experience for people who come to gallery openings and performances and things of that nature.
We're certain, looking forward to that. We had a gallery open recently right across the street from you folks. It's a great improvement to the neighborhood. Thank you for that investment. Motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call.
Stathard.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gernat.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
It's adopted seven to zero.
Thank you.
Item number 20, Bricks, 220 South 31st Avenue, Suite 3103. Request permission for an addition to their present Class C and catering liquor license of an L-shaped outdoor patio area. It does not conform to Rule 7. There's the park over there, so we need to suspend the rules if we wish to grant.
Public hearing on agenda item number 20 begins now. Are there any proponents?
Mr. President, members of the council, Mike Kelly, 7134 Pacific, comparing her today with Dan Matusek, one of the owners. And this is just an outdoor patio for the Midtown. As you know, they came down to Midtown, the Bricks operation, which is a wonderful operation. We haven't seen it. And this is just the outdoor area, which I think will be a great addition to the, to the whole operation. We're standing here for any questions you might have.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Roll call. Stathard.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gernat.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
It's adopted seven to zero.
Good luck.
All right, thank you.
Item 14 and 15 go together. 14 is Regency Lodge, 909 South 107th Avenue, Class C liquor license, new application, old location. And 15 is a catering license for the same applicant at the same location.
Public hearing on agenda items numbers 14 and 15 begin now. Are there any proponents?
Please state your name and address.
Dan Morick, 23903 West 70th, Shawnee, Kansas.
Thank you, sir. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Second.
Roll call.
Stathard.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gernat.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
It's adopted seven to zero.
Good luck.
All right, thank you.
Item 14 and 15 go together. 14 is Regency Lodge, 909 South 107th Avenue, Class C liquor license, new application, old location. And 15 is a catering license for the same applicant at the same location.
Public hearing on agenda items numbers 14 and 15 begin now. Are there any proponents? Please state your name and address.
Dan Morick, 23903 West 70th, Shawnee, Kansas.
Thank you, sir. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Second.
Roll call.
Stathard.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gernat.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
It's adopted seven to zero.
Good luck.
Item 14 and 15 go together. 14 is Texas Roadhouse at 520 North 155th Plaza, Class C liquor license, new application, old location. It's an annexation. And 17 is a catering license for the same applicant at the same location.
Public hearing on agenda items numbers 16 and 17 begin now. Are there any proponents?
Thank you. Christopher Heinrich of the law firm Harding &amp; Schultz, 121 South 13th Street, Suite 800, Lincoln, Nebraska.
Thank you, sir. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Second.
Roll call.
Stathard.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gernat.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
It's adopted seven to zero.
Good luck.
All right, thank you.
Item 14 and 15 go together. 14 is Regency Lodge, 909 South 107th Avenue, Class C liquor license, new application, old location. And 15 is a catering license for the same applicant at the same location.
Public hearing on agenda items numbers 14 and 15 begin now. Are there any proponents?
Please state your name and address.
Dan Morick, 23903 West 70th, Shawnee, Kansas. Thank you, sir. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Mr. Gernat.
This is the old hardware store at 1801 Vinson Street, isn't it?
Yes, sir, it is. We've imagined a new sort of creative purpose for this space.
Okay. And the interior is going to consist of what?
for food and beverage.
And this is when you have performances and shows and displays, is that correct?
Certainly. We are, we're by no means a traditional bar operation. We're seeking a license specifically to augment the patron experience for people who come to gallery openings and performances and things of that nature.
We're certain, looking forward to that. We had a gallery open recently right across the street from you folks. It's a great improvement to the neighborhood. Thank you for that investment. Motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call.
Stathard.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gernat.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
It's adopted seven to zero.
Thank you.
Item 14 and 15 go together. 14 is Regency Lodge, 909 South 107th Avenue, Class C liquor license, new application, old location. And 15 is a catering license for the same applicant at the same location.
Public hearing on agenda items numbers 16 and 17 begin now. Are there any proponents?
Please state your name and address.
Dan Morick, 23903 West 70th, Shawnee, Kansas.
Thank you, sir. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Second.
Roll call.
Stathard.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gernat.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
It's adopted seven to zero.
Good luck.
Item 14 and 15 go together. 14 is Texas Roadhouse at 520 North 155th Plaza, Class C liquor license, new application, old location. It's an annexation. And 17 is a catering license for the same applicant at the same location.
Public hearing on agenda items numbers 16 and 17 begin now. Are there any proponents?
Thank you. Christopher Heinrich of the law firm Harding &amp; Schultz, 121 South 13th Street, Suite
Thank you, sir. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Stottherd, Thompson, Festerson, Garnett.
Yes.
Gray, Jerem. Mr. President.
Yes.
Adopted seven to zero.
Thank you.
Item number eighteen is Nebraska at the Market, twelve fifteen Leavenworth Street, Class C liquor license, no application, no location. This is an upgrade.
Public hearing on agenda item number eighteen begins now. Are there any proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Stottherd, Thompson, Festerson, Garnett. Gray, Jerem. Mr. President.
Yes.
What? No, it doesn't need to be. It's adopted seven to zero. Nineteen upon eighteen oh one Vinton Street, Class C liquor license, no application, new location.
Public hearing on agenda item number nineteen begins now. Are there any proponents?
Hello. My name is Samantha Chester. My address is nine oh six Sally Street, Papillion, Nebraska, six eight oh four six.
And my name is Ryan Tool, nineteen forty-four Prospect Street, number one, Lincoln, Nebraska, six eight five zero two.
Thank you. Did you want to say anything or?
Well, we're happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Mr. Garnett.
This is the old hardware store at eighteen oh one Vinton Street, isn't it?
Yes, sir, it is. We've imagined a new sort of creative purpose for this space.
And the interior is going to consist of what?
Of a sort of a gallery slash performance space of several offices, of a staging area for food and beverage.
And this is when you have performances and shows and displays, is that correct?
Certainly. We're by no means a traditional bar operation. We're seeking a license specifically to augment the patron experience for people who come to gallery openings and performances and things of that nature.
We're certain looking forward to that. We had a gallery open recently right across the street from you folks. It's a great improvement to the neighborhood. Thank you for that investment. Motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call.
Stottherd, Thompson, Festerson, Garnett.
Yes.
Gray, Jerem. Mr. President.
Yes.
Adopted seven to zero.
Thank you.
Item number twenty, Bricks, two twenty South Thirty First Avenue, Suite thirty one oh three. Request permission for an addition to their present Class C and catering liquor license of an L-shaped outdoor patio area. It does not conform to Rule Seven. There's the park over there, so we need to suspend the rules if we wish to grant.
Public hearing on agenda item number twenty begins now. Are there any proponents?
Mr. President, members of the council, Mike Kelly, seventy one thirty four Pacific. I'm here today with Dan Matusek, one of the owners, and this is just an outdoor patio for the Midtown. As you know, they came down to Midtown. The Bricks operation, which is a wonderful operation, we haven't seen it, and this is just the outdoor area, which I think will be a great addition to the whole operation. We're standing here for any questions you might have.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Stottherd, Thompson, Festerson, Garnett.
Yes.
Gray, Jerem. Mr. President.
Yes.
And Jerem passed a second time for a potential conflict of interest.
Motion approved. Roll call.
Stottherd, Thompson, Festerson, Garnett.
Yes.
Gray, Jerem. Mr. President.
Yes.
And Jerem passed a second time for a potential conflict of interest. It's adopted six zero one passing.
Roll call.
Stottherd, Thompson, Festerson, Garnett.
Yes.
Gray, Jerem. Mr. President.
Yes.
Jerem passes a second time for potential conflict of interest. Rules are reinstated. Item number twenty-one. The Den Room thirteen, seven eleven North Hundred and Fourteenth Street. Request permission for an addition of the present Class C liquor license for an outdoor area.
Public hearing on agenda item number twenty-one begins now. Are there any proponents?
Yes, Brad Darden, eight zero six, eight zero zero six to Overstreet. Omaha, Nebraska.
Thank you, Brad.
No problem.
Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Stottherd, Thompson, Festerson, Garnett.
Yes.
Gray, Jerem. Mr. President.
Yes.
Adopted seven to zero.
Thanks very much.
Item number twenty-two, Omaha Mining Company, seventeen thirteen fifteen Leavenworth Street. Request permission for deletion of their present Class C liquor license to remove the L-shaped deck to southwest, the fenced L-shaped volleyball court, and the beer garden area.
Public hearing on agenda item number twenty-two begins now. Are there any proponents?
Yes. Catherine West, eight oh seven Northwest Hundred and First Street, Oklahoma City, Oklahoma, seven three one one four.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Mr. Jerem.
Where's Terry?
He passed away on December eighth, two thousand twelve.
Oh, I'm sorry to hear that.
He was my brother.
And have you taken over?
My mother technically owns the establishment, and she's not able to be here. And I'm in the mid-time of selling the place, overseeing the day-to-day operations so that our patrons that have supported Terry throughout the years and his employees can maintain their jobs and the neighborhood can still have the place to have their after-hours and...
What was your name again?
Catherine West.
Catherine, why don't you make a call to Mr. Brown's office?
He did talk. She has talked to me.
Okay. All right. Just want to make sure that in that transition, you have all your ducks in a row to...
They do.
Good.
They came up right after Terry died.
Good.
Yeah. Buster was the first person we seen when we came to town.
Great. Well, again, I'm sorry about your brother. He was a very responsible operator there, and we never had any trouble from him.
Yeah, he was there eighteen years, so...
Yep. Okay. Well, sorry for your loss and wish you luck with the sale.
Thank you.
Motion to approve.
Second. Roll call.
Stottherd, Thompson, Festerson, Garnett.
Yes.
Gray, Jerem. Mr. President.
Yes.
Approved seven to zero.
Thank you.
Item number twenty-three, German American Society, request permission to appoint Donald Lerdal, manager.
Public hearing on agenda item number twenty-three begins now. Are there any proponents?
Good afternoon. Donald Lerdal, two fourteen West Alexander and Valley.
Thank you, sir. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Stottherd, Thompson, Festerson, Garnett.
Yes.
Gray, Jerem. Mr. President.
Yes.
Approved seven to zero. Item number twenty-four and twenty-five, we'll take together, they're the same applicant. Twenty-four is Granite City Food and Beverage, ten oh one North Hundred and Second Street. Request permission to appoint Leon Henry Claren, manager. And twenty-five is for their brew pub license.
Public hearing on agenda items number twenty-four and twenty-five begins now. Are there any proponents?
Yes. My name is Leon Henry Claren. I reside at sixty one twenty one South Hundred and Ninety First Street, Omaha, Nebraska, six eight one three five.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Stottherd, Thompson, Festerson, Garnett.
Yes.
Gray, Jerem. Mr. President.
Yes.
Thank you.
Approved seven to zero. Item number...
Twenty-six.
Twenty-six. Eight oh one Chop House, fourteen oh three Farnham Street, Suite one oh two. Request permission to appoint Ian Rockwell, manager.
Public hearing on agenda item number twenty-six begins now. Are there any proponents?
Yeah, Ian Rockwell, thirteen twenty-three Jackson Street, Omaha, Nebraska.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Stottherd, Thompson, Festerson, Garnett.
Yes.
Gray, Jerem. Mr. President.
Yes.
Approved seven to zero. Item number twenty-seven, Omaha Country Club, request permission to appoint John Davis, manager.
Public hearing on agenda item number twenty-seven begins now. Are there any proponents?
Yes. John Davis, sixty nine twelve North Hundred and Twenty Second Court, excuse me, Omaha.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Mr. Festerson.
Thanks. I certainly support this as well, and this is my district. Just wanted to ask you a question about the upcoming PGA Tour and seeing how you're feeling about that and making sure everything's all prepared from your perspective and from the city's perspective, too. I know one hundred and fifty thousand visitors are coming your way in July, right?
That's right. One hundred and fifty-plus, actually. We just had Media Day yesterday, and it all went well. From my standpoint, everything is moving right along. The Bruno event team has done a great job. Prom catering is getting started out there, and Schaefer Sports has begun their setup of the infrastructure right there adjacent to Seventy Second Street. So from here on out, for the next sixty-two days, we're going to be building a lot of stuff.
Not that you're counting.
It is sixty-two days.
Yeah. Well, great. I know we're all excited for it, too, and it's a big deal for our city, and I know we're repaving your street here shortly, too, and we'll get that done prior to everybody being here, of course.
I do have a question, and thank you for paving. You're talking about country club road, right? What about Seventy Second? Is anything going to be done about that there where the median is being fixed? There's a lot. I've just had people ask me about all of the chuck holes and everything. I'm assuming that that... I just moved here, so I don't know what the procedure is.
Yeah. Well, I'll give you my email address, and let's talk about that, and we'll do all we can to make sure everything looks good.
Okay.
Great. Thanks.
Sounds good. Thanks.
Roll call.
Stottherd, Thompson, Festerson, Garnett.
Yes.
Gray, Jerem. Mr. President.
Yes.
Approved seven to zero. Item number twenty-eight, AfoMA Corner Store, fifty five twenty-two South Thirty First Street. Request permission to appoint Z. Michael Mahara, manager.
Public hearing on agenda item number twenty-eight begins now. Are there any proponents?
My name is Z. Michael Barak Mahari, five five two two South Thirty First.
Thank you, sir. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Mr. Garnett.
Mr., you're right on the northwest corner of Thirty First and T Streets, correct?
Yes, sir.
Can you... We've had a standing problem down there in regards to young folks congregating and police response to the exterior of your building and on the... Well, actually, on your side of the property. And I'm not saying that it's your fault. I'm hoping that I can convince you to help in the efforts of eliminating these folks congregating out there and maybe after they see movement of security across the street at South Side Terrace that they seem to take their... Go across the street, or they entice people to come over to your side and maybe do some illegal activities there. What... Can you give us some assurances that you'll do whatever you can to take care of and participate in eliminating that problem? Because you sure could use some help there, especially you're going to be the property owner and the manager there.
Yes, I can do.
What can you do on the outside? Have you looked at any electronic devices or any additional lighting or making sure that when you go outside to pick up the typical trash pickup that you do outside? What can you do to assure the council that you're going to give us a helping hand on that corner?
Yes, what I see, everything, I can do it. Can help.
Well, we're really going to be keeping an eye on that place. We've got to get that situation under control because it is causing some headaches for a great housing entity that we have in the city. And anything that you can do... I understand that, you know, it's not generating out of your store. I'm fully aware of that. Let the record stand clear. But I'm asking for some assistance that they're outside of your store. Whatever that you can do would be greatly appreciated.
Okay, thank you.
All right.
Okay.
Motion to approve.
Roll call.
Stottherd, Thompson, Festerson, Garnett.
Yes.
Gray, Jerem. Mr. President.
Yes.
Approved seven to zero. Twenty-nine and thirty go together at Corner Store Beverage Mart, eighty-five ten K Street. Request permission to appoint John Savaski, manager of their package, and thirty of their catering liquor licenses.
Public hearing on agenda items numbers twenty-nine and thirty begins now. Are there any proponents?
Myself, James Subject, in fifty-one fourteen Gertrude Street. That's from Bellevue.
Thank you, sir. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Mr. Jerem.
Yes, I just want to welcome Jim to the council today. Jim is one of the bigger suppliers for wedding invitations and beverages for weddings as well as craft brew supplies, and he's right down there at Eighty-Fifth and K.
Good-sized store.
So if you haven't stopped, then it's worth the tour. He might even show you the Sarsaparilla plant behind the place. It's kind of a neat tour. Thank you for giving it to me the other day. So pleased to support this, Jim.
Thank you.
Roll call.
Stottherd, Thompson, Festerson, Garnett.
Yes.
Gray, Jerem. Mr. President.
Yes.
Thank you.
Approved seven to zero. Item number thirty-one is O's, ten fifteen Farnham Street. Request permission for a special designated license for a beer garden on May twenty-sixth from five PM to two AM with music ending at one AM.
Public hearing on agenda item number thirty-one begins now. Are there any proponents?
My name's Lance Wang, twelve eleven Howard Street, Unit two oh one. I'm here to answer any questions that you guys might have this evening.
Thank you, sir. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Mr. Jerem.
Yes, Lance. Have you talked about the one AM outdoor music with anyone in the Old Market or the...
We have. Dorsey Olson's, our media above Urbane. She would be the closest resident there. And then we also gave the... Greenhouse would be the next place. We gave them the office, a phone number to put up there, so if anyone thinks the music too loud, they can just give us a call for that evening.
What was Dorsey's reaction? Because she's a frequent emailer.
She is. We did this last year, too, so this is her second year ongoing.
Two one. Was it last year to one in the morning?
Last year was till eleven. We stopped at eleven. We're going a little bit later this year with the music.
How would you feel about maybe going to midnight this year and seeing how that goes?
Ideally, we want to cut the music outside anyway. We're going to base this actually, we, you know, obviously being in the Old Market and looking at the area here, we want to meet with the DID, which we did yesterday, and kind of talk about the concerns of the Old Market as a whole. We don't want to run away from, you know, the problems that they're having down there with the kids and everything. So obviously, we met the precinct captain down in that area and the Old Market Association. I let them know what we're doing today and what we're approaching today. They don't feel that it would be a problem, just as long as everyone's aware. So we really opened up the lines of communication, especially on that block, since there's been so many use there, particularly during the Taste of Omaha and things like that. So that's where we hit pretty hard. I will control music based on crowd. If I see that it's becoming any sort of issue, we're just going to cut it early. I would like the ability to go to one, but once again, more than likely, we're probably one of the bars that does last call the earliest anyhow, and we're going to push everyone in and clear out half the people toward the end of the night just to make sure that we don't run into any problems.
Well, I'd feel more comfortable if we graduated step by step and were cautious about this, and if you went from eleven to one, it was such a big jump.
Would it be okay if we turned the music down significantly? We don't want to lose all... If we turned it down, we want to keep people there, especially if they're having fun and being responsible, because if we turn off the music completely, we're just going to push all these people out into the street at once if we close it. We can gradually step it down.
That's another line of questions is security. What are you going to have outside?
Security, just this last weekend, we did the crawl for cancer. So we had about eight hundred some people out there, and we had three officers, one on each side. And then we have our security staff, one on the main entrance, which is the only entrance that we do open up. Restaurant side entrance is not. So we control the flow by having one entrance and then having officers on all sides to make sure that the outdoor area is secure.
And how late did that event go?
That event went till, just in the daytime, so about eight PM.
Yeah, I want to support your event, but I want to do it in an area that we're pretty concerned about, being respectful to the people who live there and mindful that there have been a number of people who live down there who've contacted me, a handful about noise.
From our establishment?
No.
Oh, okay.
But they're just mindful of the Old Market in general, and if I were to go right to one AM to support that, I think I would hear about it.
Would twelve thirty be a good compromise?
Well, I think eleven to one is a meet in the middle at midnight, as far as I'm concerned.
Okay.
But you're... That's a very good negotiation. You're probably very successful in your negotiations, but midnight would be better for me. I don't know what the will of the council is, but that's, I think, is a way to go from last year at eleven. Let's try it this year at midnight and see how that goes.
I guess my only concern with it is actually meeting with, you know, what we're trying to do is bring some of that fear away from West Omaha. Most of the people that are coming down, we're specifically doing EDM, which is a large West Omaha fan base. We're investing quite a bit of money into creating an event which is appealing to that crowd and that avenue. Now, if we... I unfortunately do not want to cut it horribly early. Twelve thirty would be a little bit more reasonable for me. We're investing probably four or five thousand dollars between security, staging...
Well, you are a good negotiator.
And it's just to make this event, and we would like to make this a safe Old Market event. Obviously, we... When we first initially got this law, we really wanted something in the Old Market that's safe, something that shows that we're not afraid, that we can run it correctly, and that's something that I personally tried to stand by. I don't believe I have any issues being even on that corner. I've never, as a business, had issues and...
Are you using a promoter?
No.
What will be the type of music?
EDM, which is like house. It's no... There's never any R&B, never any rap. Franklin has it.
That's EDM?
EDM. It's a lot of bass beats, so no lyrics, really. It's just all...
Yeah.
Mr. Jerem, I would support midnight.
I just... I can't go to twelve thirty this year. I just know what's going to come down the pipeline is I'm going to get the calls, I'm going to get the emails, I'm going to get complaints. Why did you do this? And so, you know, maybe the will of the council is to grant something more lenient than that, but that's just where I'm at.
Okay.
Roll.
Was there a motion?
Yeah. You made a motion, right, Chris? For midnight?
No.
No. Oh, he wanted... He's got a request midnight.
I'm requesting until twelve thirty, if possible.
This is for midnight.
This is meant to midnight.
Yes.
Stottherd, Thompson, Festerson, Garnett.
Yes.
Gray, Jerem.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Has amended.
Roll call.
Stottherd, Thompson, Festerson, Garnett.
Yes.
Gray, Jerem. Mr. President.
Yes.
Approved as amended, seven to zero. Item number thirty-two, Chevy's at twenty-six oh seven North Main Street. Request permission for a special designated license for a beer garden on May twenty-first, seven AM to one. Music would end at one AM.
Public hearing on agenda item number thirty-two begins now. Are there any proponents?
Yes. Good afternoon. Jeremy Edelman, one five eight two four Parker Street, and I'm here to answer any questions.
Thank you, sir. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Mr. Thompson.
Thank you. Twelve o'clock.
That's perfect.
I move twelve o'clock.
I'm not going to be as hard a negotiator.
Roll call.
This is on the amendment to twelve. Stottherd, Thompson.
Yes.
Festerson, Garnett.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Has amended.
Second. Roll call.
Stottherd, Thompson.
Yes.
Festerson, Garnett.
Yes.
Gray, Jerem.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Thank you for being one of the few Elkhorn people that drive down here and come to the public hearing. I'd like to see more of you come down.
Couldn't think of a better way to spend it with you fine people. I had to miss the tea time, but I'm okay with it.
Consent agenda. Any mayor of the city council, my cousin and I, have placed on a consent agenda to be removed. I'd remove consent agenda shall be taken up by the city council immediately following the consent agenda in the order in which they were removed unless otherwise provided by the city council rules of order.
The public hearings on agenda items numbers thirty-three through thirty-five were held on April thirtieth, two thousand and thirteen. Roll call.
Stottherd, Thompson, Festerson, Garnett.
Yes.
Gray, Jerem.
Yes.
Mr. President.